Good evening. I'd like to call and order the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, May 5th, 2025. Roll call.
Chairperson Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Bogacznik?
Here.
Commissioner Jump?
Here.
Commissioner Lubavich?
Here.
Commissioner Mikic?
Here.
Let the record also show that ex-official Pat Green and Tina Glad are in attendance, as well as our City Administrator Greg Brzezinski and...
Betsy Olavon.
Our community developer, Betsy Olavon. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Approval of the Planning Commission minutes for April 21st, 2025. Note corrections, additions, or deletions if any.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to the second?
I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of the agenda. Acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes. Note any deletions, additions, or changes if any. Homem of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reorganization of the Hibbing Planning Commission. First, we have nomination and elections of officers for 2025. Currently incumbents are Chairperson Gordon Smith and Acting Chair George Bogacznik. The zoning amendment committee, we have incumbent Gordon Smith, and then we've got two vacancies because of change in our board members here. And then we have the Heritage Preservation Commission, which is vacant. First, we'll do nominations for the chairperson. So I'll open up nominations for the chairperson. Are there any nominations for chair?
I'll nominate. You, Gordon Smith.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations for chairperson. And in only one, we have a... I'll take a motion for a unanimous ballot for chair. A motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you get... Next up, we have nomination for acting chair. I'll open up the nominations for acting chair. Are there any nominations for acting chair? And I'll nominate George. Are there any further nominations for acting chair? Any more nominations for acting chair? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations for acting chair, and at this time, we'll entertain a motion for a unanimous ballot for acting chair, and I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Other ones we've got to do are the... Zoning Amendment Committee. And for the new members that are on board, you want to just give a brief overview what the amendment committee does, Pat?
They look at different items for zoning, what permitted uses, conditional uses that are not in our zoning ordinance right now. And City Hibbing has eight different zoning areas, so what may be allowed in the rural area and not in the urban, you know. So we look at... One item is shipping containers. Right now, they're not allowed residential use. So that would be... We're two... I think we only can have two on there now that went at five. So we would do all the pros and cons, and then bring it to the Planning Commission with our report on that subject, if it wants to be passed or not, or allowed. So there are technical panel.
So you're saying that with Gordian, that we should only vote one more with the five instead of a seven?
Correct, yeah. So we can only have two without having a quorum and then public, you know.
Yeah, it used to be three when we had the seven under board, but now we're down to five, so we do two.
I can check with our city attorney on that, but that's for... Once you have three, we have a quorum.
Sure.
At least two for sure.
We'll check on that.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and look at placing people for that. Are we doing the same nominations? Or we don't have to for this, right?
We don't, we just took volunteers.
New members can be on that, on the tech panel.
So I'm certainly willing to sit on it again. Is anybody else interested in doing that?
I would partner with you on that.
Okay. So that'd be the two of us, then, Gordian and myself.
Yep, and we don't have to vote on that. We just get ahold of it, too.
All right. And that, we don't meet nearly as often. That's just on an as-needed basis, so it's just occasional. If something... Once in a while, something new comes up even that you've got to look at it, you know. So... Okay, and then the other thing is the Heritage Preservation Commission. That's vacant. You want to just give a... I don't know how much they even need, so...
I don't know too much about it, myself. Greg, do you know our heritage preservation? I know they discuss, you know, historic buildings. They preserve mostly buildings, I would think, like City Hall here. And when their meetings are, we... Our office hasn't been informed of that.
I think it's one of the committees that Candy's working on filling right now.
So we can hold off on that until they know if they're gonna... If they're working on that board.
Themselves, okay.
Yeah. Since we don't need to vote on it anyway, we'll just ask for a volunteer to on that.
Okay. That sounds good. We'll just wait to hear what they end up deciding there and what they're doing, so... So then, moving on, new business. Convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a conditional use permit request of the City of Hibbing, 401 East 21st Street Hibbing, to allow for the construction of a new public safety building in the R1 Single Family Residence District in the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances, which is permitted only with the CUP on the subject property, 1425 East 23rd Street. Staff report.
Chair, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of a public safety building that will house the Police and Fire Department. This will be a public use building in the R1 zoning district, and that requires a conditional use permit per section 11.05 subdivision 5A. The property parcel for the construction of the public safety building will be owned and operated by the City of Hibbing. The applicant has met the minimum criteria for a conditional use permit in the R1 zone. The applicant is here, and no conditions at this time. Turn it back to you.
Okay. Do you want to just give us a brief overview of what the city's looking at doing here, basically?
So the property in question is the property that we own jointly with St. Louis County and Minnesota Department of Transportation. What we are working on is one of the partners, St. Louis County, will be exiting from the partnership, and then the City of Hibbing and Mendat will take over joint ownership, 50-50. And what we've done is we've split out about four acres or so to build our public safety building, police, fire, ambulance. And according to our zoning code, I think it has to be... We have to go through the process and get a conditional use permit to do such. And Pat, can you tell me what the verbiage is? I forgot what the verbiage is in the zoning.
I missed that, Greg.
So I think there's... Isn't there some verbiage in the... In our zoning ordinance that talks about every property has to be zoned specifically to this use?
Public and quasi-buildings...
Thank you, yeah.
Require a conditional use in any one of our zones because they're a public building. That's why they can go in a residential zone, public utilities, City of Hibbing, Public Works. That's how they get into those areas without rezoning.
Sounds good. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Any comments, suggestions?
Pat, I just got one question. Didn't we rezone this as commercial already? Or why isn't that not, you know, with the city building?
Well, because... City buildings, even in a commercial zone, they would probably need a conditional use to do this, because it's called a public quasi-building, public use. Community buildings sometimes need that, even if it's not affiliated with the city, and it's just for Community Hall. And that allows, without spot zoning...
Okay.
So that R1 district also extends, you know, into a... It's all R1 out there, Maryview, so you have single-family use.
That also includes probably what the...
Correct.
The racetrack's probably still zoned, R1.
Correct.
But... The property all the way to the north, all the way up to 169 is probably all R1 because it's all where the city gravel pit is.
There's some commercial. I know that the Kenzeabon gas station, that's commercial there.
Okay.
But coming back the other way, I don't... I can't remember where the commercial zone starts, but a lot of it is residential.
Okay. I'm just... That's my only question or comment. I know we... Eventually, I'd like to see some of this property zoned, like a P for Park, stuff like this.
Correct. So, yeah, along the Beltline, there's light industrial. There's really no residential along, you know, the double lane.
Yeah.
There's no frontage road either, but that can be looked at. No different than a developer that wants to do something, and you look at the zoning, and that's why we can bring it to the Planning Commission to rezon for a different type of use. It makes sense. If not, doesn't make sense, then there's questions on why, you know. So you can never have everything zoned correctly, you know, no matter what.
That's it. That's my only question.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just one for Greg. It's an academic question, but construction will be started in the next 12 months, correct?
Correct, within the next 12 months.
Just to verify that. All right, thanks.
Corey, I know that the city has been talking to the PUC quite a bit on what they're going to do with the electric, gas, water, and everything for this building. And plans are in place, and there might even be some breaking ground this spring yet.
Go ahead.
On some of that, some of the infrastructure in the way, or getting ready for rerouting. And I know there's some stuff with the city that they want us to move some poles that are in the way going out to the recycling center, so they're not... You don't have to drive around the wood poles, so...
It's good to hear. All right.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Well, you have to go over the...
Oh, we got to do finding of facts first.
Uses.
Okay. Number one, the proposed building or use is specifically listed as a conditional or interim use in the regulations applicable to the district in which it is to be located. And that would be yes. Okay. At the proposed building or use at the particular location, request is necessary or desirable to provide convenience and will contribute to the general welfare of the neighborhood or community. Yes. That the proposed building or use will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, utility facilities, and other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare.
Chair?
We should be reading the responses that they...
From the applicant.
Okay.
And then go to the... Yeah. So they responded to the questions, and then you would agree or not.
Okay, we'll back up to number...
Number two.
The response was the proposed location is desirable as part of an approved referendum to provide the City of Hibbing with a new public safety facility by modifying the existing Central Range Public Safety Campus. And George said yes to that. He agreed with that.
So then, Chair, you would go to number two if all the commissioners agree with that statement.
Everybody agree with that? Okay. Then, number three, that the proposed building or use will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon the adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, utility facilities, and other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare. And the response of the city was the site will be modified to accommodate a building addition, but not... Will not change the overall function of the existing site as a public safety facility.
I agree with that.
And number four, that the proposed building or use will be designed, arranged, or operated so as to permit development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable district regulations. And the city's response, the new addition will not impact adjacent properties and stay within existing property boundaries and perimeter fencing limits. The new addition will also meet all applicable setbacks for structures.
I agree with that.
Yeah, it's basically already there. They're modifying and changing the building, so...
It's nice the fact that they threw a couple prints at us, so we could see.
Yeah, the layout and stuff. So being we're all in agreement on all four, I will make the motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This one will go to the City of Hibbing on May 7th at 5:00 PM, which is this Wednesday. Okay, next on the agenda, convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a conditional use permit request of the City of Hibbing, 401 East 21st Street, to allow the construction... That's the one I just did. So we've got one, and the next...
B.
Yeah, the next one. Okay. Convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a conditional use permit request of Hibbing Solar LLC, 333 Broadway, Suite 460, Troy, New York, 12180, and on behalf of owner St. Louis County Environmental Services, 201 South 3rd Avenue, West Virginia, Minnesota, 55792, to allow for the development of land at the Hibbing landfill and surrounding areas for a solar farm in the O Open Space District and the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances, which is permitted only with the CUP on the property, 4001 Landfill Road, Hibbing. Staff report.
Chair, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of an electrical generating solar farm on the closed landfill restricted zoning district. The City of Hibbing allows this use as a conditional use in that district. It appears that this would be a positive use for a closed landfill and would not have any building structures in MPCA methane areas of that landfill. Solar Farm is part of a Minnesota power energy plants to supply dependable power to its customers. The solar farm meets the criteria for a conditional use in the CLR zoning district. I do have one condition at this time. Most conditional uses are for one year without construction being started. The applicant did request, and that has to do with different monies and availability to start in a three-year period. So we would extend this conditional use right now for three years without actual construction work being on the site. Work on the development will happen during that three-year period. Development sometimes can be for getting different types of grants, getting money for funding. The applicant is in the audience, and I'll change... Turn it back to you, Chair.
Okay, can we have the applicant come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Giovanni Maruca, Chief Development Officer and one of the founders for Eden Renewables, and the applicant for the conditional use permit. My address is the same as the address on Troy, it's our head office here in the United States. We also have a satellite office here in Minneapolis, and there's a few of my colleagues here as well. So I'm really here just to maybe try to help answer any questions or comments, anything you'd like to understand about the application. I do think it's important to address the little condition that we're asking to change. This process is a little unusual. Minnesota Power, by law, is running an RFP process, and that's going to take them about a year before they select the projects that they want to work with in their first year, and then they're going to run a second process next year. The deadline for the submitting that application to them is at the end of May, so that's why we're asking for a little extra time, because the process is a little bit elongated, and it's pretty much out of our control. We wouldn't be able to go and seek, not seek, but be able to pull together all the funding for the project until after we've been selected, because as part of that selection process, you have to agree a purchase price for the electricity, and that purchase price is what's kind of for the financial industry to understand, because that's how the revenue would be generating for the project to pay back the money that you would use to construct these projects. These projects generally use three types of money. There's equity, tax equity, and construction debt.
Okay. You want to just give a, like, a brief overview of what you're trying to accomplish out there on the property?
Sure. So if you're familiar with the area, it's about a 167-acre parcel of land. It's about 40, 50 acres of a cap portion, and then the rest is uncapped, and there's a little smaller area. We're looking to develop and construct a 15-megawatt AC, 10-megawatt DC project. Oh, sorry, I got it backwards. 15-megawatts DC, 10-megawatts AC. That's, as part of the RFP, the maximum you can do for these projects with Minnesota Power is 10-megawatts AC. There will be a portion of it constructed on top of the cap, and then a portion off of the cap. We're working with Minnesota Power for the interconnection. There's... We should be in the northwest section of the solar farm, of the parcel. We're reusing a fixed ray racking system, so there are generally two types in the industry. There's the single-axis trackers, which move east to west. Here, we're using the fixed array system, which would be just facing to the south. That's largely because of when you're working on a cap, you have to use a ballasted system, and the ballast system doesn't do so with a moving... With a moving racking system, so we've gone the fixed approach. The project will probably generate in the order of, you know, was it about 15 million kilowatt-hours, Tom, or was it 20, 19 million kilowatt-hours annually? That electricity will be supplied to the Minnesota Power network. Kind of important to understand that it's on the distribution network, and why that's relative is that the electricity system in basically every state in the US has a transmission network and a distribution network. The distribution network is what gets the electricity to your home or to your place of business. So one of the benefits is by generating and supplying into the distribution network, all that electricity will be used in the local distribution network area, so not having to get involved in the transmission network. That was part of the Clean Energy Plan, was to work on transmission projects, which you'll see Xcel and Minnesota Power doing these large 400-megawatt projects. But they also wanted to balance some of those projects because they take a long time. They're much bigger, so they have created this RFP process for Minnesota Power, Xcel, and Ottertail, which are distribution-level projects, which are up to 10 megawatts. The other thing about our business is we are... Do things a little bit differently. So you'll notice in Minnesota, there's this law about creating pollinator habitat as a requirement. It's something that we've been doing for 15 years, and funnily, or interestingly, Fresh Energy, who helped establish that law here in the state of Minnesota, actually came to see our projects in the United Kingdom back in 2015, because we've been doing pollinator-friendly habitats since 2011, 2012. And they... From what they learned from our projects is what helped establish that law that was set here in Minnesota, which actually has been adopted in, I think, about 15 states around the United... Around the US currently. So that'll be a big part of our program. We love the idea of being able to make clean electricity and use the land also for planting native grasses and wildflowers to create pollinator habitats, because it's another area that, you know, through our modern farming techniques, we put a lot of pressure on the land. So... And I think in total, Tom, we've got about 5,000 acres. So we've been doing this for 15 years, so we've now got, between the United Kingdom and our projects in New York, we have nearly 5,000 acres that are under pollinator habitat management. So it's a big part of our approach. And we'll also be developing a community benefit program. Typically, these programs consist of providing some educational funding to the schools, where we offer an annual scholarship to a graduating senior for $1,000 for the life of the project. And then we also finance some... We provide some funds in additional $2,000 a year for field trips to the solar farm and for enhanced curriculum development, so that can students who are interested in STEM and schools that want to participate can learn about the benefits and how these projects work and how they're constructed. That's kind of the summary, I think, of the program or of the project.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions?
What's the output voltage after it hits the distribution side?
The high side of that transformer is 69 or 115? Yeah, so we're connecting at 23, which is on the distribution network. That's the low side. And then in Minnesota Power's transformer, the high side is 69 KV.
Good.
I have some, but I'm waiting to see if anybody else has.
Go ahead, Corey. I'll let you go.
Go ahead.
First of all, I think this is a great idea. I'll just put that out there. But some questions on your narratives and your support for the conditional use permit. I see there's a solar tax production... Or a solar tax production tax that... Is that still $1.20 a megawatt-hour now for Minnesota?
I believe that's the latest number, correct, Tom?
And so then Hibbing's portion of it would be 24 cents a megawatt-hour, be 20%, right? twenty percent, right?
That's right. Yeah, I think the county's eighty percent and the city would be twenty.
And the county gets eighty percent?
Correct.
That is right. Under biodiversity, I know you're going to fence this property.
Correct.
What about birds and nesting and roosting? Do you just allow that, or do you have a way to keep them out?
Yeah, so we don't, yeah, that's, it's a good question. So, so we'll use livestock fencing instead of a security fence, a typical chain link fence, and we do that because of the, it's still a rural environment and it's more friendly to wildlife. Aside from the construction period, we try to enhance the biodiversity. So if, if birds want to nest during the nesting season, post-construction, we don't have, we don't have a challenge with that. It's not a problem at all. As a matter of fact, we have, you know, we, in New York, we have twenty projects, and about half of them are in research programs with Cornell University. And one of the things that they're monitoring is the improvements. So we go out and do kind of this baseline biodiversity check of the flora and fauna. And then we make some investments post-construction to kind of restore the work, because there's, you know, there's compacting of soil and, you know, you tear up the grass a little bit when you're doing the work. So you restore all that stuff to it with the, with the native grasses and wildflowers. And then what we're seeing in New York is typical to what we see in the UK is that it's really become new places of habitat for, for, for your, for your ground nesting birds is a, is a really big one that we see a lot of. We also see raptors, actually, the birds of prey enjoy these areas because you get, you start getting more diversity and more insects which are quiet, which bring in more of the kind of animals that they like to feed on. So we actually, you know, we actually see that as a, as a benefit and have seen that working on our projects. So we don't really try to overly restrict. You know, we also will, will leave small spaces underneath the livestock fences to help for the smaller creatures to, to move across the project. The main thing we're trying to keep out are deer, and from the livestock fencing is deer will sometimes jump up and try to nibble on, on cables and things like that. So those are the, the main concern from, from wildlife. So it's almost like a, a regular farmer who's, you know, growing crops and worried about deer coming in and eating their crops.
Okay. You mentioned the education program and working with STEM, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the hands-on activities. You had a little blurb at the bottom saying awarding multiple annual scholarships to graduating local high schools, high school students pursuing higher education in these critical fields. So are we to understand that, that is going to trickle down to our, our local schools here, and they will be benefited with the, these scholarships?
Correct, that's right.
That will happen?
Yeah, that's what we do for all of our projects. So the town, the town or the city that hosts these projects, there's generally a school district. So we, we try to embed ourselves and work with the school district to provide an annual scholarship and to use the extra funding that we provide for field trips and enhanced curriculum development. So I think here in New York, so far, we've, over the last five years, we have, just on the scholarship money, I think we've deployed about fifty-five thousand dollars, because we've got twenty projects there. So we'll be doing the same thing here in, in Minnesota. We've got a number of projects that we're, we're developing, so we will start to seek out and, and develop those relationships with the local school, local, local school district, which I think is, is the Hibbing school district, Hibbing City, if I think I got that right, Tom, Steve, I'm not, I believe that's correct.
We need more time. Under community acceptance, you talk about hosting an open house at a local community, community center, and personalized letters to neighboring parcels. My thought is, should this be going on first before this comes to us, so that their community knows what's going on and they have a chance to react to it before we approve a conditional use permit? This is a question that I personally have, because I don't know the answer to that. Maybe it's not that way. And then, a little bit later down, under visual impact, there was one address here that might be a, a site issue, and that property, property owner will be contacted, but it hasn't been contacted yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it's a good question. So both of these things are, are related. So we've already initiated a mailing to the, the local residents that were immediately adjacent to the solar farm, and it's one family. We hadn't heard from them to date, but we did stop by this morning and got to meet Sarah, Sarah and her husband Steve, Susan and Sarah, Susan and Steve. So we met Susan today, and we sat with her for about a half an hour and answered a, a lot of her questions. And she wasn't sure if they were going to appear tonight or not, but she seemed fairly, fairly understanding and comfortable with what we're doing. She's, we looked at her, at her view aspect. We think from, from where we are, we're not going to be removing any of the trees on her boundary that's in the, on the county's land. So we, you know, she felt that it was largely going to be very well screened. She did raise some concerns about the geese and whether we'd be trying to keep them off the property. And again, as I described, we really only do that during, during the construction period, because they tend to just do that naturally, because of the, there is a bit of noise when you're constructing. And we've left our business cards and have, her husband wasn't available today, so I think we're going to try to coordinate a, a follow-up call or meeting with her to meet her husband and see if he has any concerns. But it's something we do for all of our projects. This situation in terms of the timing is a bit unique. Normally, we would be doing these open houses prior to, to this type of meeting, but the way Minnesota Power is running their RFP, you get better points and get higher priority on the selection list if you have things in place. So one of those things is land control. Another one is a CUP. Another one is if you're in the interconnection application process. So because of the timing being so tight, we, we were focused on those aspects, because without, without them, you are less likely to win the RFP process. So that's, that's how we ended up prioritizing. But typically, normally, we do that stuff in advance. But we're still, we're still making the commitment to do that, and, and what we'll be able to do is, if there are concerns raised that require any mitigation, we'll still take those onboard and probably be able to accommodate them. Because fortunately, the site is, you know, it's a pretty good site in the context of, you know, can it be seen? That's generally the biggest concern that comes out of these projects is the visual.
So if I may, what, what we're hearing is the one resident was contacted?
Yes.
That has direct line of sight to this?
Well, she has, she has, they have, we took some pictures today. It's not a direct line, it's an oblique line, and it's a very filtered through, through about a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet of trees and shrubs.
Sure, but they have been contacted.
Chair.
So, all of the neighboring property owners get notifications. So the, the person he's speaking of and sixteen other people within a certain distance of, whenever we have a conditional use, they're sent notifications that they can, what the conditional use is for, and that they have, they can come to the meeting. They're notified. So they were notified by us and by Eden.
So we've done that already?
Yes, they're notified before the public hearing, so that they can come to.
That's where I was going with this.
Yeah, they're notified prior to the public hearing.
Allow those property owners to have their chance tonight.
Sure.
If they wanted to show up. So they have been notified.
Yes, they've been notified before the hearing, with the hearing information, so that they can come if they choose to.
Could've said that ten minutes ago.
And, and Eden did reach out to me to see if I had any additional contact information for these specific people that they were trying to reach, and I didn't. And I told them if they reached out to me, I would give them their contact information. So they've done, prior to today, when they went to meet with them at their home, they tried their darndest to meet with them, so.
Can you bear a couple more? I just have a couple more.
Yeah, sure, sure. I'm happy to answer any, any, any questions. As much time as you need, we're here to help, so.
This fenced-in area where you're going to have, I believe, the, the energy storage system with the batteries and the panels and the whole business, is there any liability, direct liability to us, the city, for any damage or vandalism going forward if this project comes to fruition?
I don't believe so. I mean, most, you know, any that, you know, when we sign these property agreements with the landowner, we're having to warranty a whole bunch of stuff from, you know, damage to the cap, because you can't penetrate the cap, so everything has to sit above the cap area. We have to warranty against environmental waste that we may bring onto the site. We have to warranty against disturbing environmental waste, vandalism, things like that. That's still the project asset owner's responsibility. There'll be insurance. We have to have insurance in place for all those kinds of things. Because if you don't, if you don't kind of hit all those checklists, your institutional investors and your debt providers, they won't, they won't, they won't fund the project. So there are, there are things that sit within the, the asset owner's responsibility, and they are covered off through basically warranties and insurance, insurance mechanisms.
Okay, well, yeah.
And indemnity, sorry.
I caught your first line. You, you said you, you, you didn't think so, but you're not sure on that?
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure, but I'm not, I'm not an attorney, and, you know, I, I, I've gone through our paperwork that we're not fully completed on, because there are two entities at this project that we have to work with. So one of them is the county, because they own the land, but the state has a juris, a maintenance jurisdiction. And the reason I wasn't insured is that I know it's our li, our liability and our responsibility, but I'm not insured what the final wording will look like and what the final insurance requirements are, because we haven't received that information yet from the MPCA, because that stuff is still in, in process. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, left to be determined. We don't know.
Well, I can answer that, Commissioner.
You can?
We have no liability.
None?
No. We have many, hundreds of conditional uses, many stores, et cetera. It's still on that pri, that property owner. They just were permitting that use, but never have had a liability with the, city attorney has never brought it to our attention either.
Okay.
Because it normally sits with the landowner and the asset owner, who carries the, the liability for the project, so.
How about the noise impact? I know you, in your narrative, you have the seventy-nine decibels and up to eighty-nine decibels. What are the max levels that could happen day or night, and how long can they occur for?
So the, those max noises are the numbers you've seen there, and they're for different pieces of equipment. So there's a transformer, an inverter. Those are the ones that make the noise, and it's, it's, it's equivalent to a, kind of a, a shot back in terms of the noise that it makes. That happens during the daytime, because they only operate when the sun is out, so there's no, there's no noise at, at night.
No noise.
And then again, it's, it's, it's logarithmic, so as you, as you step away, once you're about five hundred to six hundred feet away, the decibel ratings will be dropping down to, you won't be able to, you won't be able to hear that beyond the regular kind of wood, wood noise, what you would expect in a kind of countryside setting or rural setting.
All right.
And I think our resident, how, how close is our nearest resident to one of our stations? I mean, they're, they're probably two, two thousand.
Two thousand, three thousand.
Yeah, so they're like a half a mile away, the nearest resident, from the, from the pieces of equipment that make noise.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'm done.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes?
Question.
So, the conditional use permit extension for three years, you know, would be one of the conditions. If Hibbing Solar, if you're not selected by Minnesota Power, I would think, and that we would put that as a condition, that the, the conditional use would be terminated. Because if it's somebody else, they would have to come for a conditional.
So I think, I think we'd be okay with that. Only thing I would say is, is that they are going to run two processes, so we'd want to make it in line with, with.
I was gonna, gee, I was gonna, I'm gonna consult with you. The only issue, Pat, would be that there might be two rounds.
Yeah.
So that, that Minnesota Power is, on the state statute, they're gonna buy up to about sixty megawatts of, of solar, and they're gonna do a thirty megawatt round, which is our first round. So I think we would, if as long as we are allowed to go for the both rounds, because it might be they would do one round, we hope to, we hope to win, but if we don't win, they would do another round next year, which is another reason why the three-year period, because we, if we miss the first round, we can still get in the second round.
During that three-year period?
Yeah.
Okay. But by three years, you would know?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I would, to cover the city and the conditional use of it, because conditional uses go with the next, with the property. So if you're not selected, if we extend it and then not selected within three years, it would terminate that, this conditional use hearing. And then somebody, if it's a different company, they would have to come to us.
So if I understand correctly, we can do this three years, and even if they lost the first round, they'd be okay for the second round?
Correct.
As long as it's within the three years, so we're covered.
Correct.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Question for Pat. Customary is typically one year, right?
Customary, yes. Like even our community developer, when you're writing grants or you're, it's a period of time, and you need, or wetlands, or mining permitting, you sometimes need all those permits in hand to even apply. So Betsy will agree, she's come to us, we need this rezoned to even apply for a residential use, you know what I mean? So I understand that they need their permits in hand, not a bill, not for construction, but for the use. And we have one, pretty much one landfill, and closed landfill restriction was put in...
Last September twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, not that long ago. That you could even use a land, closed landfill for something. And solar was one of, one of them. You know, it made sense to have some type of use for that, closed landfill. You couldn't build on it.
Two other questions. Have we done three years in the past for anybody?
No, that has, most conditional uses, they either own the property and it's for their use. A conditional use can be for a larger building, and you own that property. This is a little, but closed landfills are a little rare too, you know.
We've done a conditional use and extended it.
Yeah.
But not for three years.
Yeah. So it was for one year. They came to our office, the person medically got hurt, we extended it.
And we don't have any thoughts that we may be sowing this up for three years, and maybe it never happens, and we could have had another something come in and, in that interim, maybe unlikely, but.
That's the only.
Have you thought of that?
That's about the only use on a closed landfill.
Is it?
The restricted area.
Nothing else is permitted there.
Yeah, on, on that landfill, closed landfill use.
I'm just trying to cover the bases.
No, that was a good question. I don't, you know, you wouldn't have any type of housing or develop, and we do have the methane areas that we discussed with them and MPCA.
That you can't have any structures on the methane area.
So, you know, and wind turbines need pretty good footings to dig on. These are more of a floating.
Yeah, they're gonna, they'll sit on top of the landfill, because you're not allowed, you can't, you can't penetrate the, the cap, because that's, you know, they're worried about that causing, you know, long-term damages to the landfill. So everything has to sit on top of the cap. So all the, all the racking system will be on ballast, it's, all the cables will be on, on a cab system that floats above, above the area. And then any of the inverter stations will be off the cap in the areas where you're allowed to, allowed to break the ground.
And as you said, the RFP is about a year out yet?
Correct, yeah. So it's, the deadline for the RFP is May twenty-seventh, and I think their decision time is end of the year, December, November, December. And then, once they make that decision, the, the tricky part with this one is, once they select you, you have to then negotiate the purchase power agreement. And that's, that's the thing that probably would take, takes the longest, after you, after they've selected you, because those things, you know, getting two lawyers, three, four lawyers. Because those things, you know, getting two lawyers, three, four lawyers in a room to get an degree on points sometimes takes, takes a little longer than you expect. But that's, 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 that plus all the permits are the really critical things. Because without them, you, you, you can't, you can't get the, you can't get what we call a financeable project through the, through the financial industry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against us? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And we'll go to the questions here. Number one, the proposed building or use is specifically listed as a conditional interim use in the regulations applicable to the district which it is to be located. And that's, yes, actually, we just, like Pat said, we just changed this last fall, so it is permitted there now. Everybody agree with that?
I agree.
Sounds good. Number two, that proposed building or use at the particular location request is necessary or desirable to provide convenience and will contribute to the general welfare of the neighborhood or community. Do you want me to read all these sections in? They're pretty lengthy.
No, Chair, I mean, I think if the commissioners agree and have read some of them, they do answer pretty, pretty much all the findings of fact. And Corey went over quite a few of those with the applicant. So I, I mean, I would read it and if any commi, take a few, a minute. And if any commissioner has a question, otherwise ask for, you know, that they answered that finding of fact. But anyway, you want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yep. So for that second one there, as far as what they said and stuff there.
I'd give it a yes.
Yes.
Agree with what they're saying and?
Yeah.
Sounds good. I do too. That the proposed building or use will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic condition, utility facilities, and other matters affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare. There again, I would agree with that. This is actually a pretty rural area, actually is. Neighbors aren't very close anywhere around the property to speak of, so. Who else?
I agree with number three.
Agreement there too. Sounds good. Okay, that, number four, that the proposed building or use will be designed, arranged, and operated so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable district regulations. And there again, I would agree. I mean, it's.
I, yes.
Very rural, like you said, and it's definitely going to make good use of something that you can't do a whole lot with. Being it's an old dump site. So being we're in agreement with all four of them, we'll move on. And we retain a motion to approve this.
I'll make that motion.
Pat's conditions.
So the first condition was. Shall be, the conditional use shall be valid for a total of three years from the time the council approves it. And condition number two would be after, after three years, the conditional use will be terminated if the Hibbing Solar has, the applicant has not moved forward.
With the project.
Tina will write that better than I just said it.
Exact language. Sounds good. So we've got a motion with them, conditions?
With those conditions, yes.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And this will go to the city council on May 21st at 5:00 PM.
Correct.
So you want to be in attendance there in case any council or somebody shows up that has any questions or anything for you?
And I'll be at that meeting. They are, you know, from, I'll find out if there's going to be any questions from the council beforehand.
Okay.
It's a pretty big project and they, the council at this time does not have any of that information. So we'll make sure they get that.
Sounds good. Okay, moving on then. We'll convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to review the purchase of real property by the Hibbing Economic Development Authority, 401 East 21st Street, Hibbing, in the PD 11-1 Plan Development District and the I-1 Light Industry District in the Hibbing City Code of Ordinance on the subject property, 2810 Diane Lane, Hibbing, Minnesota.
Chair, HITA is requesting to purchase the property that the Jefferson School is located at 2810 Diane Lane. This purchase would be for future development of the 10-acre site to possibly residential housing at this time. This would follow the city comprehensive plan to develop sites for housing. The purchase would also be contingent on the property being rezoned to residential multifamily use. That rezoning will be taken up at the May 19th hearing. This would go to the council May 7th as far as planning commission's recommendation on this purchase. So the rezoning is contingent on. Did I? And that's, yeah, that's the, that's just my staff report.
Sounds good. You want to speak to this, Betsy, please?
Sure, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there's a few new ones here tonight. So my name is Betsy Olivanti. I'm the Community Development Director here in the city of Hibbing. And this site is the former Jefferson School site. It has been occupied by the Sunrise Bakery and Hibbing Parents Nursery for the past, I don't know, couple of decades. And at some point, they approached us and were asking about the potential for redevelopment of this site. I took several developers through the site as it sits right now. And we have been working with Hibbing Parents Nursery to find a new home for them. So that as a part of this sale, their location is not in any kind of quandary at all. So they will have a new permanent home within the next few months. And we've been working very diligently with them to do that. So this purchase today is a purchase of the 10.3-acre site for redevelopment due to the fact that the 2023 Housing Needs Analysis identified that we have a significant need for housing here in the city of Hibbing. And this site is primed for redevelopment and extension of the Grayshire neighborhood. So the ci, the Hibbing Economic Development Authority worked with Sunrise Bakery and its owners to enter into a purchase agreement and that is before you tonight. That sale is contingent on you approving a rezoning at your subsequent meeting. And the sale, one correction to Pat, that the sale and rezoning will all go to council at the same time at the May 21st meeting because they have to go in concert. I assume that's what Tina was telling Pat. And at this time, I'll stand for questions if you have them.
Anybody have any questions?
Do you plan on turning on that old school now?
At this time, we are seeking a redevelopment partner. I have not found one at this juncture yet. Probably the intention is to divide the plat first and try to build some housing on the initial four or four and a half acres. That's nice and level and green right there. But we will continue working up until that time, George, that we find, you know, if we can find a developer, we will. However, all of the developers that we've brought through the school building thus far, it doesn't suit any of the funding that is available right now in the state of Minnesota for housing. There are some things in the legislature for underutilized buildings and things to repurpose them and those sorts of things. But none of that has passed at this time. So the current funding mechanisms that exist in the state do not allow for a building of this size with only the ability for maybe 25 units to be redeveloped into housing, unfortunately. So I haven't found a developer yet. If that's the case then, that a developer is not forthcoming, yes, then demolition of that building and redevelopment of that entire site into housing would make most sense.
Then are you looking at like HRA type housing or on the four and a half?
Commissioner, at this time, no, because the HRA has several projects going on right now to replace the Green Haven site. And so they're really busy with their projects that they've got going on. So we've connected with the executive director of the Hibbing HRA and asked that question. Would they be interested in redevelopment of the school or development of the site? And at this point in time, she is not at liberty to, or does not have the capacity to take on another site. So I will be looking for, you know, other developers to try and take this on.
So you're thinking single fam, family homes then?
Yes, we're asking for an R3 simply due to the fact of we're not 100% sure how all of the plats will line up in, in that parcel. And I don't want to restrict a developer coming in who may want to, our Housing Needs Analysis said that we need like senior market rate townhomes and twin homes and all of those sorts of things. And as soon as you have not just one shared wall, but you do say five or six townhomes in a row or do a quadplex or something for a market rate development, we need to make sure that the zoning does not have to be redone and redone and redone. So this would allow us to come forward with a really good plan and put that in front of planning and zoning as well because it will have to be replatted. So you will get to see the entire concept design of what the plat would look like, et cetera. So doing this purchase and then rezoning still does not mean that you won't have further jurisdiction over this project. You will.
Okay. That's all, that's all the questions I have.
Anybody else have? So most of that basically wouldn't even happen for quite a while until you find an actual developer for the property anyway, so.
Correct.
A little ways out on this one probably, but we got to go through these steps first.
Yep, absolutely. And so it will come in front of you several times and you all get a chance to look at it and things. And this is a great project for all of your new members and I am very grateful that you all signed up to join into this great body because we've been bringing lots of things before them. So this is the perfect time to get involved in planning and zoning in the city of Hibbing.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience would like to speak for or against us? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time for this. And we'll do a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve this at this time.
I'll second it.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chair, I'll, I'll bring this to the council and I will, you know, let them know that the planning commission is recommending, you know, the sale, but it would be contingent still on, on the actual rezoning, which will come before us May 19th.
Yeah, what you said in your report there, so sounds good. So we'll be taking this up in another month or so.
Two weeks.
Oh, two weeks, actually, yeah.
Two weeks.
It is me already. So two weeks from today, we'll be doing the rezoning on it. I guess that's it for, do we have any, should we have open discussion first? Anybody have any? Nope. Okay, got it. I'll move for adjournment. It's been most in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We stand adjourned.
Cam, call the work order for Board of Adjustments of Appeals for Monday, May 5th at 5:00 PM. City council, it's actually about 6:00. Call of order, roll call. Tina?
Chairperson Bogacznik?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Joe?
Here.
Commissioner Lubavitch?
Here.
Commissioner Mikeitch?
Here.
But I'd also say that Pat Green, Tina Glad, Greg Krasinski, and Betsy Olivanti are all, also here. Approve the Board of Adjustments minutes from April 7th.
I'll move for approval. I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Acceptance of the agenda, acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes, noting additions, deletions, or changes, if any. I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reorganization of the Hibbing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, nominations for elective officers for 2025, per copy of the nomination vote summary sheet attached. Comment Chair, George, Acting Chair, Gordon Smith. Board of Adjustments Appeals, following call of order, roll call for agenda. Please note nominations and close therefore. Do not require support for a second. Do we have any nominations for chairman?
I'll nominate George.
I'll second that. We don't, oh, that's right, it's unanimous and then vote.
Well, you do the three times for nominations first and then close, then you do the council.
Any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair? I'll close that.
Now, your, your motion for, for unanimous ballot.
So move.
I'll second that.
So I have an unanimous motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Congratulations, George.
Nominations for acting chairperson. Moving on, nominations for acting chair, I'll nominate Gordon Smith.
Two more times.
Any other nominations for acting chair? Any other nominations for acting chair? Any other nominations for acting chair? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye for acting chair for Gordon Smith.
We need a motion first for that?
Yeah, you gotta just close it.
Close it, close it, motion, any other?
Somebody making a motion though?
Yeah, no, you can.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion for Commissioner.
unanimous ballot.
unanimous ballot for Gordon Smith for acting chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I do believe. Any open discussion? Pat, do you have anything?
No. I'll move for adjournment.
I have a motion to, for agreement. Corey is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I stand adjourned.
And we stand adjourned. And we stand adjourned.